I should have put between those two because I can't hear them on the phone.
He's telling me to go like this.
I don't know how you can't hear him.
Let me go like this.
I don't know.
Thank you.
You can protect my ears.
All right, head coach. Quarter. Please. Fifty-nine, please stand for the flag.
Chairman of the General.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda?
Make a motion to adopt the agenda. Number seven.
House seven.
Motion to adjourn in favor. Do I hear a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I move we adopt the consent agenda as presented.
House seven.
Motion to adjourn in favor.
Aye.
All right, first thing on here, we'll go down to the guest speakers, communication information line, first one on the list, Dan Henderson.
You're just gonna throw me right into it, aren't you, man? No sense in dragging our feet. Um, right now, I'm here in my capacity as the Chamber, Lake County Chamber of Commerce, treasurer, that's what I do, I handle that. Okay, so at the last council meeting date, April ninth, two thousand nineteen, there was again confusion about the three committees that were born out of the rural tourism studio. These committees operate on their own, raise their own money, spend their own money. Mr. Warren muddied the waters on that again by saying it was the Lake County Chamber of Commerce coming to ask for money. That's not the case. We simply hold their checkbooks because we are a destination marketing organization for Lake County. And those committees have to reside under our umbrella because of that. But we don't share funds. We don't get any of their funds, they don't, unless we decide to put them in there as a board, they don't get any of our funds. So I just wanna make sure everybody's clear on that. And it's been explained numerous times, it's on audio files, it's on video files, that it's been explained and explained and explained. So hopefully this will be the last time we have to go over it. Also, there was some mention of the Lake County Chamber's budget. We had a meeting last Wednesday morning, I presented the financial statements with bank statements attached to it, our latest bank statements from March thirty-first. Ray and Roberta were both there, they've both seen them. Me, I would characterize it, we're not rich, but we're not broke. And that's just the bottom line, and they have agreed that they can confirm that for you if you have any questions on it.
Yep.
Any questions, comments concerned?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Next on the agenda.
Okay, so I also wanna clear up some of what was spoken about on April ninth, two thousand nineteen. The Chamber of Commerce, we have volunteer committees. Right now, we have in the range of over fifty volunteers working towards tourism in Lake County, and by extension, Lakeview itself. These committee members are your community members, your residents, your local shoppers, your local business owners, your local employees, and your employers. We value these volunteers for the work that they do, the ideas they bring to the table, and momentum that has been kept up following the rural tourism studio last year. That is why I'm so disappointed and frankly horrified with the last regular council meeting on April ninth, two thousand nineteen. Two of our volunteers got up and made a presentation to the town council with a request of fifteen hundred dollars to finish their brochure for a trail that starts here in Lakeview. You have since given us those funds out of your hotel tax, and we greatly appreciate that, as well as our volunteers do. After their presentation, Mike Warren got up and started speaking. In my interpretation, Mr. Warren said that they were here as fronts for the Chamber of Commerce, which is apparently making a money grab. This is, if this is not what he was saying, as he is here today, then I believe our volunteers should have clarifications on what he meant. As the only way I can interpret this is a slap in the face of all these volunteers that worked on this project, over fifty of them, in all three committees combined. The Trails has around twenty-five. I have with me a letter from Travel Oregon expressing their appreciation for the work that has been done so far, as well as excitement for the year to come. We are on a journey to try to bring tourism to Lakeview and Lake County, and we would like the town council to come on this journey with us as a partner. But none of this would happen if we let negative voices drown out all the good and we lose our volunteers. I'm gonna just read this letter really quickly, but prior to that, I spoke at the Governor's Conference and Symposium, the Travel Oregon Symposium, and today I got an email that says, hello Jessica, I'm so glad that you gave a talk at the Southern Oregon Tourism Conference, and that we were able to meet. I would definitely love to meet up at some point this summer and talk with you about opportunities to our, with our company to bring tour groups into Lake County from Bend. It just seems like it would be a great fit for our plans to open a Bend office. So tourism is alive in, in, in Lakeview and Lake County. We're getting offers to bring in buses of tours from Bend, just today, from speaking and leaving the word out. The only reason I got to speak at the Oregon Tourism Governor's Conference and the Symposium is because of what of our, our volunteers have done. It's not just because the Chamber's doing great, it's because we house these volunteers, these fifty-plus volunteers that do all of this stuff on their own. So I'm just gonna read this letter and then I'll be done. Promise. So this is a letter from Alexa Carey, she is one of the heads of Destination Development and Travel Oregon. Says, dear Jessica, I wanted to follow up with a recent check-in call about Oregon's Outback Outdoor Recreation Tourism Studio. It's hard to believe it's been a year since our team has come to Lake County for the studio program that happened in April of two thousand eighteen. As mentioned, I've had the opportunity to be engaged in nearly two dozen regions during the, during or after the tourism studio. I wanted to send a short note highlighting just a few of those accomplishments that I've seen through your leadership as the Chamber Executive Director. We typically expect between forty to seventy participants in a smaller tourism experience studio format. In regions with a smaller population size, we expect to see closer to forty participants. I was blown away in the very best of ways that you and your team were able to conduct outreach to double that number, engage the whole region, including non-traditional participants, and demonstrate how the connection between tourism and recreation can be an economic driver for Lake County. Participating regions also typically launch a single action team focused on a single project. That is usually because the capacity in the community is enough to focus on just one new area, and funding resources are limited. Your region conducted not one, not two, but three impact areas with multiple projects. You and the greater leadership within the region took the information from the studio and found the three key areas that initially would dramatically move the needle on tourism development and business support in the region, including building off the existing assets, developing quality product, and recognizing the investment in people necessary to have an exceptional visitor experience. Truly, we've been incredibly impressed with the work you and the Lake County Chamber and the partners you've engaged with this work have accomplished with the Western Heritage, Outback Trails, and Geological Features teams. Not only that, but you've been able to create some phenomenal partnerships to make those projects come to life. One perfect innovation, example of innovative partners is that require, that require intentional time, leadership, and development is a collaborative approach to working with the United States Forest Service. This is likely the first example of such a success, successful integration between another agency and the Chamber. You have also created such a solid relationship with Brad and Bob with Travel Southern Oregon. There are some stumbling blocks that communities hit during the implementation stage of this work. Consistent leadership, convening capacity, and management of the grant finances. You've been able to unite your staff in both, in both the front and middle of the house role, as well as take the management of the grant by acting as treasurer to all of these teams. That requires so much impressive leadership and trust on behalf of the community, it's clear that you have all of that. Another incredible successful milestone has been leveraging initial funding through the Oregon Tourism Studio, securing a competitive grant with Travel Oregon, which is not easy to do in a competitive nature, and raising funds independently for additional projects like Roundup Hitching Post Bike Racks, Main Street Art Insulations, Business Branding Integration, New Regional Brand Development Flags, Additional Signage, and Frontline Staff Training Program, which will be happening on May sixteenth. Honestly, it's unheard of to have such momentum and success out of the gate. It's clear that one of the main magic ingredients has been your team in this tourism initiative to support business in the greater Lake County economy. Please know how impressed and supportive we are of the amazing work you're doing. We're here for you and excited to see the growth, transformation, economic momentum in the region. Looking forward to Roundup because now she comes every year. In closing, I'd just like to say that this town runs on volunteers, from our little league to our booster club, to our Roundup and Affair, and everything in between. To insult our volunteers, to insult the people that have regular jobs, but also have a passion and have an outlet for this passion by helping our community and our businesses and themselves, their children, and all the visitors that come through here, was horrifying for me to see. They put time and energy, time when they could be with their kids, their extra time outside of their job, which was what Melissa and Jamie did when they came here. Melissa had a sick child that she left because this was important to her. Her sick child was also important to her, but she came here to address you, not to address Mr. Warren, and she should have never been spoken against. She is a volunteer, as Jamie is, and they addressed you for an ask. You did deliver that ask, but I'd just like to remind you how important our volunteers are and what a big stake they're making in our community. At the Travel, at the Travel Oregon Governor's Conference, I was told by Travel Oregon that we are now the face of success in rural communities in all of Oregon. The only reason we are there is because of these groups and their volunteerism. Thank you. Thanks, Jessica.
Thank you, Jessica. I have to say, do appreciate everything that the Chamber and all your volunteers do. Do a great job.
Thank you.
And next on the list is the Southern Oregon Regional Solutions Advisory Committee. And we've got in here the names and stuff, everybody, and then there's a deal in here on the Regional Solutions Team.
Kind of a breakdown of everything that has been going on and the projects working on.
And then also in there, excuse me, Elks Spring Prescribed Burn Fire Season, starting out simply Oregon. They've already started one here, about twenty miles east of here, in the south waters. The next one, we're going to New Business. The Elks State District Committee to Read, and it's suggested youth week proclamation. Whereas the Benevolent Detective Order of Elks has designated May first through seventh as youth week to honor American junior citizens for their accomplishment, and to give this fitting recognition of their service to community, state, and nation. And whereas, Lakeview Lodge Number Fifteen Thirty-Six will sponsor an observance during that week in tribute to the junior citizens of this community. And whereas, no event could be more deserving of our support, participation than one dedicated to these young people who represent the nation's greatest resource, and who in the years ahead will assume the responsibility for the advancement of our free society. And whereas, our youth need the guidance, inspiration, and encouragement which we alone can give in order to help develop those qualities of character essential for leadership and go forth to serve America. And whereas, to achieve this worthy objective, we would demonstrate our partnership with youth, our understanding of their hopes and aspirations, and sincere willingness to help prepare them in every way for the responsibilities and opportunities of citizenship. Now therefore, I Ray Turner, Mayor of Lakeview, do hereby proclaim the first week of May as youth week and urge all departments of government, civic, paternal, and patriotic groups, and our citizens generally, to participate wholeheartedly in its observance. We have Dr. Daley coming up, June twenty-second, ten a.m. to two, at, I believe at the hospital. And then here we have one. A letter requesting it down to a doctor, city ordinance making the feeding of deer illegal in the city limits. Ordinants could include the feeding of any wild, non-domestic animals, reasoning health of citizens, health of deer, safety of citizens, city beautification, and economic losses, implications of the Oregon state law recently adopted for this purpose.
Tammy, was Tammy gonna speak?
Yeah, I am going to speak if I can.
I'm gonna sure read your agenda, okay? I didn't get her name on there, excellent, I apologize.
Oh, am I on there? My head, my head. Well, thank you all for taking time to listen to my request. As I'm sure most of you know by now, the deer population in Lakeview is exploding, and it is causing tremendous amounts of damage to plants and to, to, you know, to our town beautification in general. So I'm here to request that we adopt an ordinance that would make it illegal to feed deer inside the city limits. I know that this is not going to be a complete fix for our problem, but it is a place to start, and we have to start somewhere on this issue because it is truly out of control. So I'd like to cite some reasons why I'd like you to consider this. Obviously, deer do carry the deer ticks, and they do spread the Lyme disease with these deer ticks. That is dangerous to humans as well as domestic animals. I'd also like to mention that the deer are frequently in the, what I call the old kindergarten park, but the play park at the south end of town. There's hardly any time that you drive by there that you don't see deer in that park, and they are defecating in that park, their feces are in that park, and we often have the, the lunch program in that park in the summer, there's children playing in there. It is a very bad situation, and it needs to be addressed. One aspect that I would like to point out to everybody here is that feeding these deer is really detrimental to their health. And I have spoken to the biologists at Fish and Wildlife. People are feeding the deer things such as a loaf of Wonder Bread, leftover potato chips, seeds, Cheetos, all kinds of garbage food it's throwing out for the deer. What happens to the deer is all of those things in their gut destroy their natural bacteria. And so people think that they're doing this wonderful service, they're feeding the cute deer, when in fact it kills that bacteria. The deer do go on and they eat their regular, you know, whatever their regular meals are, which is most of what everybody is growing in their yards, and the deer actually do eventually die because the bacteria has been killed in their stomach. None of their regular native foods can be digested correctly, and so actually people are doing the deer a huge disservice by feeding them. They think it's cute, it is not. I would also like to point out that, you know, we are seeing more and more cougar sightings within our city limits. The reason that we're seeing the cougar is because they're obviously following the deer. That is their main sustenance, that's what they, they thrive on, and so they're, therefore we're going to just continue to see more and more cougar inside of our city limits. And then, of course, there is the aggression of the deer towards human and domestic animals. And both of these have been documented, I've spoken with the biologists, as I said before, and I have had several people tell me of encounters that they have personally had with deer, with their small animals, and also themselves. And then fourth, I'd like to mention our city beautification and the economic losses. You all recently, I believe, just approved your budgeting for the town planters, which I know Danae will be implementing with the kids from the Horticulture Club. We have not in the last five years seen these planters flourish. These planters are continually being eaten off, they are being ruined. Last year, the, the grass in the center did fine. In case anyone doesn't know, grass is not deer, that is not their first choice of food. They would much rather take all those blossoms off of those planters, and they have ruined them, really, in the last several years. You're spending a tremendous amount of money on those, you know, and to my, my suggestion would be that we ask the boys in the maintenance section to, to dust those planters at least once a month with some deer repellent. Bloomers would be happy to donate that to you for the boys to use, but, you know, this year especially, where we want the town to look nice for this hundredth year celebration, I think we should all try our best to, to do all we can to make the town look, to look nice, and I think this is one, one thing that we can do from bloomers. But, you know, they are continually destroying planters, and, and not only planters, let me also mention, I have had a tremendous amount of customers come in who have spent significant amounts of money on trees, shrubs. Trees specifically, the bucks will, will rut on those, when they come into the rut, they'll start rubbing their horns on those trees, anything that is small in diameter, they essentially will just whip them to death until they've broken the bark. A lot of times they'll break the tree itself, but once they break the bark on those trees, the tree is really dead. And so people in our community here are trying hard to beautify our town, yet here we have this invasive group of deer that are actually just really ruining any of the beautification that's going on. There is, of course, an economic issue, you know, for our particular business, but more than that, I'm just really here to present this to you as an option to begin a process which I think could really, if we're, if we're not encouraging them to stay, and I'm not saying that they're all going to move on, but let's not encourage their behaviors and encourage them to stay. The herd in itself that, that is in the city limits is very unhealthy, there's a lot of inbreeding going on, and, you know, most of you have seen several deer around town that have been hit by cars, all of these things, you know, by feeding the deer, we're encouraging them to stay. I, you know, personally haven't seen it, but I've had people tell me that they've seen the deer follow people right up under their front porch waiting for a handout. So although I realize that this could be an unpopular decision for you all to make, I think, you know, at this point, we're not talking about asking you to adopt anything that would include euthanization of the deer, actually, they don't actually do that, according to Fish and Wildlife, on the new state law, it actually is not a euthanization. But when I spoke to the biologists, they said that we do not have to adopt any part of that particular law, that we can just isolate this to just be a not feeding in the city limits. And it doesn't have to be anything further than that. But I think that you all need to consider starting this process somewhere, and other communities I know have actually darted the deer and actually moved them away. I don't think, from what I've understood, it has not been terribly successful, but, you know, I think that the first thing that we could do as a community is not encourage them to come, not encourage them to stay, not encourage them to be there. Do you guys have any questions that you'd like to ask me about it? I'll try to answer if I could.
I think you've hit on everything that people are concerned about, and I've noticed a lot of deer in my neighborhood, they live on South Up Street, that have been hit by cars, and it's pretty pathetic to see them looking around with a dangling back leg or something.
Yeah, it is. It's not good for the deer, and it's not good for us. So that's my request at this time, I'd like you to take it under consideration, and, and I think it would be much appreciated. I am sure it's probably about a fifty-fifty split in the town, I'm sure there's, you know, several older people that are just having the time of their life feeding those deer, but, you know, the fact of the matter is, they're not doing the deer any, any good either, and so I just respectfully request you taking this under consideration and considering writing this ordinance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So I had a conversation with the same ODFW biologist, and we talked about the House bill that can help organizations with OSP and sheriffs and the town, and Fish and Wildlife help maintain this issue, like talk about relocating, there's, it's, it's a plan based on each community. And unfortunately, they cannot actually assist us unless we do have an ordinance in place. So one of the suggestions was to not let all non-domesticated animals, because everyone is talking about bird feeders and whatnot, but also to put in, you know, specifically deer, things like that, you know, we need to consider concerstions, I'm not sure that's an issue. It's not much here, but it could potentially be an issue if I'm receding, I used to see receding this case, but, it's my understanding that Burns is already in the process of writing this up, and so I'm gonna see if I or Darwin, since he's served there, could contact them and see instead of reinventing the wheel, what they have come up with so far, and like that, one or two, if you guys are interested in even moving forward with that.
Definitely.
So, okay. Thank you, Tammy, again.
Thank you all so much, I really appreciate your time.
Okay, moving right along. I'll go to the mayor council, manager updates, council, do you have anything?
I don't have this thing.
Okay. I have nothing. Roberta, do you have anything? Want to add?
Other than what I already told you today, we're filing a retire in the end of June.
Okay. Moving on down to public comment period. Do you have any public comments? Yeah, of course.
Can I, can I do it from here, or do I go all the way around there?
Well...
Just like in school, you gotta get ahead of the class.
Just like at the commissioners' office, you gotta get up there.
That way we got a clear shot at you without hitting anybody in the audience.
He injected today, so I'm gonna do it. I come here today, not as a commissioner, I come here today as a citizen of Lakeview, a citizen of Lake County, and one of the members of the Trails Committee. When I watched that video, needless to say, I was really pissed, and, because I know how much time and effort, not only our committee put into it, but Western Heritage and the geograph, uh, geological, excuse me, how much effort we put into this. What bothers me the most about it, and why I did, one of the reasons I ran for county commissioner was to try to unify the county, right? We can't, you guys are in a position where you're trying to make the county, the city better, I'm in a position to make the county better, but it doesn't mean that those positions are that much different because we're like brothers or sisters in this deal. What's good for the county is usually good for the city and, and vice versa. And I think if we try to separate ourselves too much from the greatness that we have around us, it creates a divisiveness. And so my call to you guys is that, you know, just like the other night when, when the rains came, you know, Ray and I were out in the middle of the night, I called Scott, and, you know, there was volunteers everywhere, you know, I wasn't there representing the county, I was there representing the people. And this is what this is all about. And so... And so when you guys later on with other tourism stuff, I just ask that you guys think about those things. Is it good for our people, you know? Don't, don't think about all the divisiveness or what could happen. Is this something that could unite us? Is this something that could make our county and our town better? And, you know, we spent all weekend putting up, what are those things called?
Reassurance.
Reassurance.
Research markers up on the mountain. And, you know, it was, it was awesome. Because I know for later on, people are going to see those and they're gonna, they might not be from here, you know. And they're gonna ride bikes on the trail, on the Noni Trail, the Oregon Timber Trail. And then they're gonna stay in a motel room and then they're gonna eat dinner and drink beer and get to know the community. And if our community is divisive, no matter how we are, they're not going to come back anyways, no matter how well our trails are. And so that's all that happens.
Would you explain what reassurance? What do you guys call it?
Oh, so every quarter, it's every quarter of a mile or eighth of a mile on that one.
I'm not sure what you guys did.
So on the Noni Trail, there's reassurance markers on it every quarter of a mile. And so people know, I made it a quarter of a mile still. And then...
I'm in the right place.
And that here's still, yeah.
Oh.
And then at every intersection, there's another reassurance marker that might go down to another track. So we did all of the Noni Trail to the Gun Range and what they call the Dave's Bail Off Trail, which is halfway up. And I had to do that one and when you're fat, it sucks. Anyways. See? We're together.
High altitude, the Ashka.
Anyway, this next weekend, we're supposed to do the Forest Service Road on up to Roger Meadow. But we didn't last time because it's so deep. And then we might not do it. And so that's why I've been working on the sign that's going to come out here. You know, I was here nine months ago trying to get a sign put up from ODOT and all the bureaucracy that you gotta go through to put up a sign is enough to hold my hair out. And so, I mean, we've just been busting our tails, you know. And so just to see that, it really broke my heart, you know. And, because those girls didn't deserve that, you know. So that's all that's...
Thank you for the clarification.
Right over there, there are two signs that we've been trying to get put up and ODOT says don't.
Yeah, you have to do it my way, Ray.
I tried to be helpful.
We'll still be able to use those sometime. We're also...
We've also made some changes, so hopefully we won't have those issues again.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Okay, do we have any more public comments?
I was going to refrain from comment today, but since I was excluded from the last council meeting by not being involved, notified as the media and as an individual, as other individuals are notified of county council meetings. The last meeting then was last week. It was a hidden meeting from the public. Public didn't know it was going on. That was when the approval was granted. After circumcision had taken place, I reported to the council, as you all know, on April the 9th. I've talked to councilors. I've reached out to councilors. I understand that you may not have been able to. And perhaps I didn't reach the right number.
Oh, does it not mean?
No, my daughter gave me your number and I called it and left a message. I don't know who I left a message with, but I didn't have a number for you, so it's my daughter's. But I have talked to other councilors other than the gentleman. I'm not so sure I want to call him that. But the man sitting at the opposite end down there at the table, that called me a liar in the last meeting that I was not even invited to, that dealt with the committee that I had had tried to better our community with. And I don't think there's a doubt in the room with the people that I've talked with thus far. And so I'm terribly shocked that the volunteer was mentioned today. Because I will tell you, I am no longer an elected official. That's right. But I take great pride in my community, as I've done for a lot of years. As an elected official, I gained a lot of money. But this council is going to enjoy spending for, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars each year that Mike Warren advocated for. And the council and the town are going to get to prosper from that. If I had not advocated for a lot of those funds, they wouldn't have been there. If I had not pushed for a little more coming our way from the Red Rock negotiations, which we're all aware of what occurred there, the fiasco that occurred in a joint meeting right here with the county. Yes, I do question the county's actions a lot of times. And it's after 10 years of seeing those actions, after becoming involved to start a lodger's tax fund. And then, yes, being told, and it's documented, and I have councilors that agree, yes, Jessica, you did say the chamber and you too, Dan chimed in, in our initial meetings on lodger's tax would have wanted to create our own identity for the town of Lakeview and not be all about Lake County. Because when people go to Medford or Bend, do they say, oh, I'm going over to Jackson County or Jefferson County? Because no newcomers or visitors don't know where those are at. They say, I'm going to Medford or Bend. They need to say, I'm going to Lakeview. Everyone understands that. That's all we were asking for, as an identity for the town of Lakeview. We moved forward in that. And yes, you did say the chamber would ask for no funds. But yet, as I told those councilors in the discussions that I had yesterday with them, after finding out from my son on Friday, Good Friday, except for a great Easter weekend to celebrate with my family and to think of what God put us here for. And I thought of what I had run into and what had been done to me by the administration of the town that I had gained these monies for, to better the community, not for me to spend, for the town to prosper for, for Lakeview to have its own identity. That's all I asked for. But yet, the funds that we were asked in my February meeting at lodger's tax chairman came from you, Jessica Bogartis. There was nothing... Those two ladies that appeared here, they circumvented because you told them to come around and were allowed to. They did not come to our meeting. You came into our February meeting and threw that down in front of me.
Are we going to have personal attacks again? I'm not, I'm not going to do this.
I'm not going to put up with this again. I'm not putting up with any personal attacks.
That's not a personal attack. It's a report.
That was a personal attack on Jessica.
No, it's a report.
No.
That is not a personal...
Attack.
That is not a personal attack. That is a report of a committee meeting. That's what I gave to the council in the last April 9th meeting.
We're not going to go through this again. You and I had a good discussion last night.
Yes, sir, we did. And I told you I was going to refrain from this, but yet I was bombarded in this meeting as I was in last meeting and called a liar.
We are not going to go through this again. You have your right to get up and speak, but you're not going to call people out.
I didn't call anyone out.
Yes, you did.
How did I call someone out?
Did you just not say Jessica Bogartis? Did you not say that?
To give you a report that she didn't, she didn't... Okay, what I told you was that she did come to us and say, we don't want the town's money.
We're not going through this again.
Okay, so I told you the truth and as a counselor, you don't want to hear that from someone involved?
Every word true. We're not going to stand here and argue about it.
Okay. Then I don't like being treated as a volunteer. And I will tell you, my volunteerism as it is now, I'm not an elected official, my volunteerism in spearheading and being named by the man that called me a liar, who gave me a report as chairman that he had been told by the chamber, as I said last time, and I won't even go into it because I said it in the meeting last time, that the direction was that we were doing things illegally down here. The Lake of Oregon cities guaranteed me we weren't. I pursued things. I lined up two agencies to help brand or give Lakeview its identity through the same way that the town of Lakeview had... I'm glad. I'm glad. It's time for you to reach out.
I appreciate the fact that you're very passionate about what you believe in. I respect that. And everybody in this community has a voice and has a right.
And I...
I just feel like we're being very redundant.
Okay, we are.
And, and so I don't want to waste anybody's time.
Okay, can I say one other thing that did occur? Because of the outburst of my report?
Three minutes.
I want to...
I gotta tell you, if you gotta think to yourself, is it really worth it?
No, it is. Because I think the community needs to know what happened. As I said, Good Friday, I was sitting home. Had no idea that a meeting had occurred Thursday, one that involved a committee that I had chaired that I had been told in the April 9th meeting. And you told me in front of them, and I have had councilors agree, yes, you were to meet with Roberta.
I was.
You never called me. I told you, call me, Roberta. You never called me. But yet, a secret meeting took place Thursday without my knowledge. I received none as a, as a media in our community. And I received none on my other email as an individual to Mike. Not as a volunteer. Yeah, you had gotten rid of me or had plans of getting rid of me and dissolving that.
Leave yourself to the committee. And I don't need any personal attacks.
I was a volunteer. No, I was a volunteer. All I need to say is I was a volunteer at that time. And so for a volunteer to, basically, to be treated by...
Time's up. Time's up.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, there's one.
It's at the very end.
We have a letter here from Rhonda Dial.
That's not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda. It's public comments, dear. It was just a... Well, Rhonda, you're asking for an old police vehicle. We need to discuss that a little further, the council does, and then we can get back to you.
Okay, I brought my award letter along with this letter, my award letter for my nonprofit. And if you need anything else, all you have to do is let me know. Any kind of paperwork, bank statements, anything that you need, just let me know and I'll provide it.
And we'll have it on the agenda for next meeting.
Right. And will we have the opportunity to have legal, make sure what would be necessary to have that take place?
What, what we do is if you have surplus property and you're a government entity, you either have to donate it, you have to dispose of it, or you can sell it in auction.
We just need to make sure there's many of the requirements that she would be...
And that's why I ask for the, make sure that she had her five old ones.
Yes.
To make sure.
Double check the...
Yeah.
Okay. And we need to also assess the vehicle probably?
Which vehicle? And then you have to surplus it out.
Okay. Have we done that yet?
We have not done it yet. Not what I...
We're in process, but we haven't made it there yet with the sheriff's contract.
I found another cop car too, out of town. Is that one of ours? The one by the Little League Field?
Oh, yeah.
Is that? By the way, there's one out there you can check out too. Well, no, it's obviously not running, but it's probably something we need to add in that...
Do we have anything else?
No. May I ask another question, please? Are we, am I going to come to the next meeting and have this voted on? Is that what's happening?
We have to discuss this, which vehicle that would be the one to get rid of if we decide to do that.
And honestly, Rhonda, this early in the contract with the sheriff's department, we're not 100% sure what exactly we're doing with these vehicles yet. So it may take a little bit before you go straight to the answer.
You guys are still in the inventory process. So you're not, there's a lot of inventory that has to be transitioned over and debated on whether or not we're going to keep, get rid of, you know. And they are, they have a lot to do. So I know that you guys are working on it, but then you got occupied with the new hires.
Mm-hmm.
So...
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of little pieces to that.
So we'll discuss it and then what, in two weeks?
Yeah.
We'll discuss it in two weeks?
We've got to go see which, you know, kind of sheriff.
You're saying that you guys get that, that time's up?
Some proper channels.
I, I don't know. It's not up to me.
That's what I was wondering.
It's up to the sheriff's department.
We can talk about it at the next meeting, but it probably won't have a decision at the next meeting, Rhonda. It'll probably be a month or two before they even get to that point. Because if, if the vehicles are usable to the point that we can put an officer in it or a new deputy in it, we can probably do that, you know, they get their vehicles and stuff. So we just have to make sure.
Until we know when the new ones are going to be delivered, I'm sure they're not going to let go of those until we know what's going on.
Understandable. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, if there's nothing further, we will adjourn the regular session at 4:44.